Meeting will come to order, please rise for their fledge of allegiance. Fledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Here.
Councilmember Page?
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Here.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Here.
Councilmember Dolan?
Here.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Here.
Councilmember Harder?
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
To approval of the Journal of Meeting of April 26, 2016.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion carries, the rules are suspended, please read Resolution Number Three.
Resolution Number Three introduced by Councilmembers O'Meara, Erby, Page, Wassinger, Dolan, O'Leary, and Harder. Resolution, whereas since 1913, the women of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority have been committed to public service across the nation and to the protection of basic human rights and liberties, whereas the county council is proud to receive once again the members of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority and encourages all St. Louis Countyans to emulate the outstanding efforts of the members of this fine organization in doing what they can to aid the less privileged of our society, particularly those who are victimized by human trafficking, this year's issue of interest to Delta Sigma Theta.
This time I move for the adoption of Resolution Number Three.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, Resolution Number Three, there are seven ayes.
Resolution Number Three is adopted, this time we'll present the resolution to the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. Does somebody like to come up?
it's a lot of years of dedication to helping out the community and better the community and making our lives a lot better, so we really appreciate the efforts that you put forth to make things a lot better for us Americans. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. To the county executives. Delta Sigma Theta, as you know, was founded on social action initiatives, so we are delighted to be here for you taking the time to meet with us again at our annual Delta evening at the county council, so we thank you for the service that you do for the national politics area and for St. Louis County.
Thank you very much.
Get in here or get a, what do you call it?
You want to stand up back here?
What do you call when you get in and photo?
Joe. Photo bomb?
Photo bomb.
You could stand up.
Hey, don't say it.
Hazel.
I guess.
Biggest crowd fan.
Hazel.
Hazel.
We're going to photo bomb them or whatever you call it, I don't know.
We won't do anything mean.
All right. Something like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Thanks. the recognition of National Correctional Officers Employees Week.
Sure, and I think Herb is here to receive it. Whereas the corrections officers and employees of the Department of Justice Services have helped to make our community safer through both incarceration and rehabilitation, whereas on a daily basis, these professionals protect over 1,200 inmates from violence and teach them the vital skills they need to survive in life after completing their sentence. And whereas these often unsung heroes of the criminal justice process are a valued and integral part of the law enforcement community, and whereas in every part of the incarceration process, from intake to release, these officers are dedicated to completing the tasks according to the stringent guidelines set forth by the American Corrections Association. I hereby proclaim the week of May 2nd through May 7th, 2016, as National Corrections Officers and Employees Week.
Yes, thank you, county executive, for this proclamation, it's very much appreciated. In 1984, President Ronald Reagan designated the first week in May as National Correctional Officer Week to honor men and women who serve in this very noble profession. In 1996, the Congress also amended it so that it would include all employees, all correctional employees across the nation. And the 585 names of the National Memorial of Correctional Officers who died in line of duty, including two Justice Services employees, Presidential Officer Henry Theory and James Hopkins, we will always honor their memory and they continue to inspire us. And I would also like to introduce Lieutenant Anthony Lewis, who's the, who's been selected by his peers for 2015-2016 year as the Employee of the Year. And Lewis is a 15-year veteran of Justice Services, and he has a few brief remarks he'd like to make about his career. Lieutenant Lewis?
Yeah. I'm truly blessed to be in a position of leadership. My career with St. Louis County Justice Service has been nothing short of an amazing journey. I have the opportunity to work with people to put their lives on the line every day to help bring about a positive change, whether it's insurance, whether it's instructing inmates to comply with the rules and regulations governing our facility, referring inmates to mental health providers, signing them up for different programs to aid them in their quest to become more productive once they are released from our facility, or assisting a fellow officer in an emergency situation. I couldn't have asked for a better group of brave men and women to be affiliated with. We all have a tremendous responsibility to help guide, shape, and affect, guide, shape, and affect the community that we serve. I am extremely fortunate and grateful to be such a, to work with such a dynamic, oh, I'm sorry. Dynamic group of people. All of them play a critical role in keeping the work environment safe and secure. Thank you.
Bit of openings, we have no bit of openings this evening, move on to communication.
Mr. Chair, there are no tax compromises or zoning matters this evening, so move on to road and bridge matters. On to road and bridge matters, item number one, Sixth District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Moving on to other communications, Mr. Chair, item number one.
See file on the county council, be directed to prepare appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number two, First District.
Please see file on the first of the county council, or to the Department of Planning, to the Department of Revenue, and to the Board of Electoral Conditioners.
So ordered.
Item number three, Fourth District.
See file on the county council, be directed to prepare appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number four, Sixth District.
Receive file, and the temporary expansion of premises be approved as requested.
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion carries.
Item number five, Sixth District.
Receive file on the legal description, be expanded as requested.
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion carries.
Item number six, Sixth District.
Receive file, and the change of owner be approved as requested.
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion carries.
Item number seven, Seventh District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number eight, Fifth District.
Receive file on the county council, be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item number nine, Sixth District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number 10, Fourth District.
Receive file on the county council, be directed to prepare appropriate legislation, same motion through item number 13, and that will be the order.
Item number 14, Third District. Receive file on the county council, be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 15, Fourth District.
Receive file, contract in an amount not to exceed $7,980,909.86 be approved and awarded to J.M. Marshoots Construction Company, lowest responsible bidder, as recommended, and authorization revision to the existing traffic control devices be approved as requested.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion carries.
Item number 16, Sixth District.
Receive file, and contract in an amount not to exceed $544,305,093 be approved and awarded to the United Bridge Builders Incorporated as requested.
Actually, that's $544,000.
I just wanted to see if you were listening.
That's a big bridge.
Got some change back.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion carries.
Item number 17.
See file on the matter to be held on the order of business referred to the council as committed whole, and that will be the order.
Item number 18, Fourth District.
Receive file on the county council, be directed to prepare appropriate legislation, and that will be the order. Add-ons, please.
Item number one, First District.
Please see file on the county council, be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, same motion through item number two.
So ordered.
Item number three, Fifth District.
Receive file on the county council, be directed to prepare appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item number four, First and Fourth District.
Receive file, contract in an amount not to exceed $3,205,447.75 be approved and awarded to L.F. Group Construction Incorporated, the lowest responsive bidder, as recommended, and authorization for revision to the existing traffic control devices be approved as requested.
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion carries.
Item number five, Third and Sixth Districts.
Receive file, and contract in an amount not to exceed $1,167,143.28 be approved and awarded to J.M. Marshoots Company as requested.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion carries.
Item number six.
Receive file on the matter to be held on the order of business referred to the council as committed whole, and that will be the order.
Item number seven, First District.
Receive file on the county council, be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number eight, Third District.
Same motion.
So ordered.
It actually appears under unfinished business, Mr. Chair.
Oh, okay, all right, so we'll bring that up at the end. Move to public forum, what county executive?
That's a further report tonight.
Okay, thank you. Move to public forum, please keep your comments to three minutes, and please state your name and address.
We have six speakers this evening, Mr. Chair. First speaker is Patty Cantor.
Who's our next speaker?
Martin Pine will be after Ms. Cantor.
Six.
Is it appropriate?
Give it to Jen over here.
You can give it to me, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Patty Cantor, and I'm a resident of Clayton. Over the past two years, I have been a strong advocate for the police and wish to share my opinion on the critical issue of making sure our county police officers are treated fairly, and we make the importance of having a strong and motivated police force a very high priority, not in words, but in actions. We are a nation of laws. We rely on the blue line on a daily basis to protect us from those that choose to break the laws, no matter how small the law, no matter who is the offender, and no matter what they personally think. It's a hard job that few can perform. Over the past 18 months, the leadership of this county has chosen to make law enforcement harder. You have chosen to take the easy and the politically correct road. You have made the job of being a police officer harder by infusing political correctness into the job of the police officer. You have made the county less safe for the vast majority of the St. Louis County residents. Crime is up about 17% through February, if what I read is true. Chief Belmar wants an additional 120 officers in response to the increase in crime. And after all this, your response to our valued police officers is that the county cannot provide pay increases to its tenured officers, and county has chosen to not be competitive in being able to hire the best officers to serve this community. Here are the facts. The average salary is now $51,829. There have been no raises for senior officers in many years. The entry salary of $48,256 was increased at the expense of tenured officers. We are having a harder time hiring and replacing officers, and we have to include police officers in training and/or waiting to make our numbers look good. Everyone understands that money is tight. Providing raises in a competitive wage is very hard for any large public institution. But here is the issue, it's been ignored. There had been nothing to move the needle on police wages in years. Most of you sitting in front of me have been in your position for many years. You did not inherit this issue. You allowed it to happen. You proactively chose to not make the cuts or spend the money on other things like trolleys. I am very confident that if you made the public aware of the county police officers, what they have been suffering in economic problems for years. You would get a huge amount of support to change that situation. I do believe that...
Ma'am, you need to wrap it up.
Yes, I am, I just, I believe that the protection of the county residents and the enforcement of enacted laws is the most important thing this county council needs to address. I am asking you to do what is right, not politically correct. This is a year where citizens are telling government on both sides of the aisle that change needs to occur. Letting the police carry the burden at the expense of our safety is something that should change. Mr. Stanger gave them $3 million raise because he places, well, I should quote, from the post dispatch, "I gave them $3 million raise because I place a special value on the work they perform," which is great, but shouldn't the funding of our police department be a county council priority and not something at the whim of an individual member? And I do thank you for that. I stand before the St. Louis County Council, put together, pull together, act as a unit, together make our law enforcement officers a priority. I am asking everyone on this council to focus on your highest priorities and use our tax dollars to provide safety and peace of mind to all county residents. Sorry, bye.
Thank you, Patty.
Can I make a remark? Just, and what's...
Just for record, and I'm not arguing with you, I just, the transportation fund or tax for the trolley can only be used for that money. It can't be used for any other general fund issues or anything else with the department. So when you say the trolley money, that's specific dedicated money.
Okay, thank you for that.
And if I could just clarify one other thing?
Yes.
It was not just me that gave that raise, this was an action that this entire council voted on, and this was 14 months ago, and it was an 8.3 at the midpoint, with basically 7% going to new officers, all the way up to 10% for our more senior officers. And I will tell you, I think that I don't obviously speak for the council, but I think if you talk to everyone on this council, we very much value our police men and women, we value their service, and every consideration that can be given will be given. And you know, during our budgetary period that's beginning now, we just recently asked for a 5% budget trim on all departments except for Public Safety and Economic Development because we didn't want to hinder those two departments from their services, and we don't want to hinder any department from their services, but particularly with respect to those, and given, you know, the budgetary constraints that we have, all consideration that can be given, I know will be given from the executive branch, and I just wanted to clarify that that raise was given by everyone on this council who voted for it.
I didn't know that, I just read in the post dispatch.
And I only, I say that in, you know, with the best of intentions.
Thank you, Patty.
Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Martin Pine, and he'll be followed by Joe Lynette.
Good evening. My name is Martin Pine, sixth man of Lane Ferguson, and I'm also president of Missouri Gasp, Honorable Chairman Mike O'Meara, council members, and county executive Steve Stenger. I commend Mr. Charles Gatton for taking the initiative by raising the subject of smoke-free air last week. As an alderman, Mr. Gatton spearheaded the city of all in successful effort to pass the first comprehensive smoke-free air ordinance locally, and for that, many of us are grateful. It went into effect in January 2006 and was the first in Metro St. Louis to make all places of employment smoke-free. St. Louis County and City both adopted fairly comprehensive smoke-free air ordinances in 2009, contingent upon approval of the Prop N Indoor Clean Air Code ballot initiative. Mr. Gatton also led that successful effort in which Prop N won by a two-to-one margin on November 3rd, 2009, despite some fierce opposition. Both ordinances subsequently went into effect on January 2nd, 2011, to much fanfare, but are now considered the norm. Today, I can patronize any restaurant in the city or county without fear of breathing in secondhand smoke, to which I'm allergic. While a major advance in public health and welfare in the region, both ordinances contain important omissions due to a long list of exemptions and fail to provide protection for some employees equally deserving of it, as pointed out by Mr. Gatton last week. They include workers in casinos and in certain exempted bars. The latter fortunately no longer the case in St. Louis City, thanks to a January 2nd, 2016 expiration clause. The exemption should be whittled down, removing casinos and bars. Also, the idea of my ending up in a nursing home where indoor smoking is still permitted is a pretty horrifying prospect, and allowing smoking by performers on stage, is that really necessary? This county council is to be applauded for taking the lead on another health issue, opioid abuse, thanks to an effort led by county councilman Sam Page, who is an anesthesiologist. You chose that because it was a long specialty to spell, is that right, Dr. Page? Sorry, shouldn't have added that in. County Executive Steve Sten, yes, signed into law mandatory program to track the distribution of prescription drugs, which has spurred action by other jurisdictions, a good thing. Returning to why I'm here tonight, I've been actively involved in the secondhand smoke issue since co-founding, bless you, and I hope you'll vote for this, Missouri Gasp, originally St. Louis Gasp, in 1984. It's time, I'll finish up. All this, all this, sorry, sneezing is good for my effort, is it?
Okay, Martin, wrap it up.
All right, sorry. It's time to give that issue priority as well and protect all employees in St. Louis County from the ill effects of secondhand smoke, which can include disease and death. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Martin.
Next speaker is Joe Lynette, followed by Donna Nicholson.
My name is Joe Lynette, and I live in St. Charles County. I'm here to voice my concerns over the current salaries and wage structure within the St. Louis County Police Department. Officer retention is not a local problem, it's a national problem. I read an excerpt from Police Chiefs Magazine in April of 2016, it reads, "Police departments across the country are experiencing increases in rates of staff turnover. Many agencies are spending enormous amounts of resources on recruiting, selecting, and training of new employees. At the same time, they are unable to make progress in losing good officers to other employers. Even though the problem of turnover is approaching critical levels, many law enforcement agencies, the issue has not received the public opinion or the public publicity as other professions. For example, the turnover rate for nurses is average of 12%. The turnover rate for teachers averages about 13%. A recent study revealed that police agencies are receiving an average turnover rate of about 14%, and that the average tenure of a new officer is about 33 months. A strong economy leads to extreme competition between both the public and the private employers. Some departments are faced with a dilemma of not maintaining minimum staffing levels and lowering their hiring standards. I have personally witnessed the concerns over officer safety and low morale in the wake of the Mike Brown shooting in Ferguson in August of 2014. These concerns are compounded by the news media's consistent vilification of our police officers. In 2011 and 2012, the homicide rate in the St. Louis area hit an all-time low. Since then, in 2013, the homicide rate has steadily increased at a rapid pace, and we are currently on track to exceed last year's levels. In February of 2016, the FBI ranked St. Louis the most violent city in the United States, surpassing Memphis and Detroit. Stresses from the rising crime rate, officer safety, and salary concerns have attributed to low morale and high attrition rate. Thankfully, the council did increase base salaries of incoming officers. Unfortunately, this has caused a problem with salary compression, and in some cases, new officers in training are...
You wrap it up, Joe?
I am.
Thank you.
New officers in training are making the same salary as other officers whom are responsible for training them. In the 2016 officers' salary comparison done in the post dispatch, the St. Louis County Police Officers ranked 13th out of 27 departments for base salary. They ranked 17th out of 27 departments for average salary, which is a further indication of the salary compression issues. How is it the...
Joe, your time is up.
Fine, I appreciate it, I appreciate everything you folks have done, I really would appreciate the attention to our police officers, they're the ones that keep us safe out there. And I did send around, there was just a recent article on O'Fallon... And I did send around, there was just a recent article on O'Fallon, Missouri, just raised their salaries, and would appreciate your consideration on that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Donna Nicholson, followed by Officer Butler.
Hi, my name is Donna Nicholson, and I work for Bethany Christian Services. And we serve children in the St. Louis County area as well as throughout the greater St. Louis area. And I'm honored to be here to let you know that I feel it's an honor to serve the children and families of the St. Louis County area. We have been in business here since 1978. Bethany Christian Services actually started in 1944 in Grand Rapids, Michigan, and then came here in '78 serving specifically pregnant women. And we've gotten into other adventures to try to serve vulnerable families. So again, I feel it's an honor to be here. One of the programs, you can see on the form, there's a lot of different programs that we do, but I'm going to highlight two. One program we started last year is a Free Diaper Friday. And one of the things that we found is the needs of those that are marginal in our community cannot, they can't meet the needs on the money that they have. So we started this Free Diaper Friday, and it's been an astounding event that we have every month. And we served in 2015 over 3,000 adults, and we gave out over 40,000 diapers. And so we serve, a lot of the families that are in, especially the North County areas, come for the diaper drive, and it's just been a phenomenal event for us to host. It's totally free. We don't ask that they're clients of ours, they just come, and that's it. So we tried to make it as easy as possible for families to get their needs met. We've partnered with the St. Louis Diaper Bank now, so now we're able to give out more diapers than we did before. So that's a win-win for our families here. The other program that I want to highlight is our Safe Families for Children program, which we started in 2010, and we've been blessed to have funding through the Children's Services Fund. And it's been a phenomenal outreach to provide safety nets for marginal families. And so if we have typically a mom that goes into the hospital or a mom who loses her home, and she has nowhere for her kids to stay that is safe, we provide homes for those children while she gets her life situated. And so we've served over 700 children since 2010. And one such mom who lived in the county who called me one day, she was riding the MetroLink, she had nowhere to go, she left a domestic violence situation, and she had her four-month-old in tow, and she didn't have, she only had a certain amount of hours for daycare, and she had nowhere for him to go, so they just spent the day on the MetroLink until she could drop him off at daycare and then go to work. And she called me in despair, had gotten her number from a hospital, and we took him into care for her to get her life established, and she was able to do that. And that's what we're here for. So we feel privileged again to serve the citizens of this community, and I just thank you for letting me share that.
Thanks, Donna.
Next speaker is Officer Butler, followed by Tom Sullivan.
Good evening. My name is Officer Butler, and I'm a St. Louis precious officer at the jail. The following excerpts are from a budget analysis prepared by Jenny Ho. She's a labor economist for the AFS CME. We will not read the entire report due to time constraints. We will, however, make a copy available to the council. My analysis reveals that St. Louis County is in good financial health. The county benefits from very strong reserves, a low debt burden, and a broad and diverse tax base. A key measure of financial health is the year-end carryover balance readily available for appropriation. Reserves provide a government with options for responding to unexpected issues, a buffer against economic shocks. The level of reserves considered adequate, which is typically measured as a percentage of expenses, is dependent on a number of factors, such as socioeconomic characteristics of the tax base and flexibility to adjust revenues and spending. The county ended 2014 with $118.2 million in reserves, which amounted to 32.5% of annual expenditures. According to S&P standards, reserves were very strong at the end of 2014. The county also surpassed the GFOA's conservative recommendation. According to a recent S&P report, the county closed 2015 with a small revenue shortfall of $6 million, leaving the county with ample reserves and a lot of flexibility for the 2016 budget. The county has reported modest operating deficits for the past two years. The county is expected to report a $6 million shortfall for 2015, which for the budget director actually ended up being zero due to unforeseen revenue, and $10.7 million in 2015. A significant driver of the revenue shortfalls are for the one-time public safety costs related to Ferguson demonstrations, $1.5 million in 2015 and $6 million in 2014. These shortfalls were a far cry from the county's forecasted losses of $48.7 in 2014 and $41.7 in 2015. While we are not financial analysts, it is hard to see what impact the small amount we are asking for would have given the county's current financial position and have given the fact that we have done our part over the last eight years to help the county reach this financial point. Thank you.
Thank you, Officer.
Final speaker this evening is Tom Sullivan.
Mr. Chairman, Committee of the Whole Meeting is scheduled for next Tuesday to look into the unprecedented problems related to the April 5 municipal election in St. Louis County. Given it's scheduled for 2:30 in the afternoon and only planned to go 45 minutes, it seems obvious there is no intention to seriously look into the matter, especially since public comments are to be prohibited. The main thing the council should be interested in is hearing from citizens who are unable to vote on April 5. I think the real intent is to cover things up as much as possible. This isn't surprising, given the people involved. The chairman of the St. Louis County Board of Election Commissioners is Richard Collette, a retired pipefitter. Of course, you are also a pipefitter, Mr. O'Meara. Your father headed the local pipefitter union and was on the county council. Your brother now heads the local pipefitters. The union has been heavily involved in politics for decades. Mr. Collette was appointed by Governor Nixon back when Charlie Dooley and the pipefitters were still getting along. For all practical purposes, the county executive makes the appointments for the commissioners of his political party and also gets to appoint a director. The pipefitters and plumbers give out hundreds of thousands of campaign contributions every year, and they have given a lot to county executive Stinger. Just one contribution to Mr. Stinger, a few weeks after he took office, was for $50,000. Eric Fay was no doubt selected by county executive Stinger as director of elections because Councilman Dolan supported Mr. Stinger, and Eric Fay has been the councilman's assistant on the council. Councilman Dolan even had a letter to the editor of the Post Dispatch just a week after the April 5 election, expressing his support for Eric Fay before the facts were even in. Mr. Stinger has been running from the April 5 mess, saying the election board is an independent board he has nothing to do with. That's the way it is supposed to be, not the way it really is. Richard Collette does not belong on the Board of Election Commissioner, and neither does another commissioner, John King. As you know, Mr. King is an attorney who has been doing zoning and real estate work in this area for probably 40 years. As such, he gets involved in county politics and makes plenty of campaign contributions. He has already contributed $500 to Pat Dager's campaign to succeed Councilman O'Leary. He also contributed to Mr. O'Leary's campaign. In addition, he is the father-in-law of Jeff Wagner, one of the county executive's top aides. I suggest that next Tuesday's Committee of the Whole Meeting be changed to after the council meeting, and that members of the public be allowed to provide comments. That will give a much better idea of what took place on April 5. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Tom. I appreciate it, because about three-fourths of your information is completely wrong, and our local union did not give county executive $50,000, and Mr. King is not Jeff Wagner's father-in-law. Thank you, Tom.
I'd like to make a comment here. I do believe, we were told that the hearing on the 10th, I thought we wanted public comment. And I had spoken to people and asked them to come. So I was surprised to find that it is going to be, you know, we're not allowing public comment.
It's an informational, Committee of the Whole, so we can get information regarding what happened during the election process, and that's...
But how can we get all of the information if we don't hear from the citizens?
Have you talked to anybody on the election board? Called them or anything to try to get information?
Sure, I have.
Okay.
I'm always on my job.
Okay. Thank you. Introduction of bills.
Bill number 97, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $24,999.99 from the Missouri Department of Social Services, Children's Division, appropriating the same for support of adult testing services for the family court, authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 98, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of $35 from Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services, appropriating the same for support of the 2016 Summer Food Service Program for Children, and authorizing execution of necessary documents. Bill number 99, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a fuel sale contract and up to three one-year renewals with the city of Black Jack. Bill number 100, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara, an ordinance approving acceptance of donation of $4,500 from Royal Bank of Missouri, and appropriating same for supportive fees and other items for summer science camp participants. Bill number 101, introduced by Councilmember Page, an ordinance amending Title 12, St. Louis County Revised Ordinance since 1974 as amended, entitled Traffic Code by enacting and adding thereto one new provision in Schedule 5. Bill number 102, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary, an ordinance providing for the vacation of Portion of Jaeger Road and of Jaeger Circle Drive rights away. Petitioners Michael C. Gambino, Christina Gambino, and Michael J. Gambino. Bill number 103, introduced by Councilmember Wessinger, an ordinance amending Ordinance Number 14,554 as amended, by repealing and reenacting Section 3 pertaining to PC 254-88 GJ Group Incorporated. Mr. Chair, that is all the bills.
Perfection bills.
Bill number 8, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Hold, please.
Bill number 91, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Take it up, move perfection, bill number 91.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, ayes, motion carries. Bill number 91 is perfected.
Bill number 92, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for perfection, perfection of bill number 92.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, ayes, motion carries. Bill number 92 is perfected.
Bill number 93, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I can take it up, move for perfection, bill number 93. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, ayes, motion carries. Bill number 93 is perfected.
Bill number 94, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary.
Move to perfect, bill number 94.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, ayes, motion carries. Bill number 94 is perfected.
Bill number 95, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I can take it up, move for perfection, bill number 95.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, ayes, motion carries. Bill number 95 is perfected.
Bill number 96, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
I can take it up, move for perfection, bill number 96.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, ayes, motion carries. Bill number 96 is perfected. Final pass of the bills.
Bill number 116, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Move the whole bill number 116.
So ordered.
Bill number 87, introduced by Councilmembers Wessinger and Harder.
I move for final passage of bill number 87.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wessinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 87, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 87 is finally passed.
Bill number 88, introduced by Councilmember Dolan for Councilmember O'Meara.
I can take it up, move for final passage, bill number 88.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wessinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 88, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 88 is finally passed.
Bill number 89, introduced by Councilmember Dolan for Councilmember O'Meara.
I can take it up, move for final passage, bill number 89.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wessinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 89, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 89 is finally passed.
Bill number 90, introduced by Councilmember Dolan and Councilmember Dolan for Page.
I'll move for final passage of bill number 90.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wessinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on bill number 90, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 90 is finally passed.
Moving on to resolutions, Mr. Chair, we have four additional resolutions this evening. Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move for adoption, resolution number one is a ceremonial resolution for a young man who's attaining his Eagle Scout badge.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wessinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on resolution number one, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number one is adopted.
Resolution number two, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Move for adoption of resolution number two.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wessinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on resolution number two, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number two is adopted.
Resolution number four, introduced by Councilmember Wessinger.
Just, I move to adopt resolution number four also. It's an Eagle Scout award for a child who has achieved the rank of Eagle Scout at the age of 14 before he finished eighth grade. So it's a wonderful accomplishment for him, and I move to adopt resolution number four.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wessinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on resolution number four, there are seven ayes.
Congratulations to Patrick Garner and Kevin Miller on their accomplishments as Eagle Scout rank. Resolution number four is adopted.
Resolution number five, introduced by Councilmember Erby. Resolution, whereas Starbucks has opened a new store in the city of Ferguson, which represents a significant part of the company's effort to help lower-income communities by providing local jobs, creating training opportunities for youth, and helping to rebuild and revitalize the city, and whereas the county council is strongly supportive of Starbucks' initiative and encourages others to join Starbucks in taking courageous steps to provide good business sense with community renewal for the benefit of all, now therefore be it resolved by the county council of St. Louis County, Missouri, as follows Section 1, "The county council congratulates Starbucks on the opening of its new Ferguson location and extends its best wishes for commercial success."
I move for adoption of resolution number five.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wessinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on resolution number five, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number five is adopted.
Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Chair, item number one.
Hold under order business, same motion to item number, excuse me, item number three, and that will be the order.
Item number four, third district. It's the report of the PIC.
I move that this report of the Public Improvements Committee be received, filed, adopted, and submitted, and that the county disapprove the recommendation of the Planning Commission and deny the petition.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, ayes, this time the report is adopted, and the council disapproves the recommendation of the Planning Commission, and petitions are denied.
Moving on to new business, Mr. Chair, we have three prepared orders to see pay.
Move for adoption, ones, one, two, and three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, ayes, motion carries. Orders one, two, and three are adopted.
Mr. Chair, before we adjourn, I would just like to ask you to, or encourage you to build in a few minutes after the hearing next week on the election board, because I know there were some people, there was a hearing in Jefferson City, and I understand that they govern that office, but at the same time, a lot of our constituents obviously couldn't make it there. So I would just encourage you to consider allowing some time for public comment. Thanks.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, ayes, motion carries. We are adjourned.